Who do we have on the line?
You've got this.
Maya is on.
Solicitor Smith.
Kristen McGlocklin, CEDOCOG.
Maya.
Carrie, are we live?
Mm-hmm. We are.
Okay. Asking you to please rise for the opening prayer and pledge allegiance. Dear heavenly Father, instruct and teach us in the ways you want us to proceed. May we walk with you daily. I pray that we will always seek your direction and guidance first. Let us not make decisions based on our limited knowledge, but let us act based on your infinite wisdom. Lord, there are many things we do not understand due to our limited knowledge. You are the creator of all. We have a world full of chaos, hatred, anger, disease, and famine. And this is not your plan for us. May we unite during this time behind efforts that foster racial, cultural, and community harmony. Lord, when we pray, we ask you to listen and hear us. How can we ask of you when we cannot listen and hear each other? We pray to be the example of love and gentleness between a parent and their child with our fellow neighbor. Now, we pray for healing for those who continue to suffer from this virus. Rid this enemy and have it evaporate without any further disruption. These things we humbly pray in your name. Amen. We convene the commissioners meeting at this time. Ask for approval in the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. So Carrie, public comment on agenda items only at this time. Can I hear you none? Move on.
2.0, Nikki Gottschall, approve the following cash requirements report.
Morning, commissioners. We'll have the report for you later today as there was a holiday yesterday.
Okay. Thank you.
Should we start the motion and then can you continue?
Yeah. Well, you want to make the motion?
I'll move to approve contingent on review by the commissioners.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. So Carrie?
We're going to start with 4.0 with Roxanne Greco.
Morning Roxanne.
And then we'll go back.
Good morning commissioners. Yeah, 4.0. We would like, we're requesting that for the TDA that you create in the Department of Public Safety Communications, one part-time temporary GIS special projects position at a pay grade 11.
Okay, any discussion or questions? Carrie Nunn can have a motion.
I'll move to approve the creation of the position.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
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 Just make a quick note for the public. That's a temporary position to have a transition between Mr. Hutchins, who's been with us a very, very long time, and the new person, Ms. Greco.
That is true.
Yep.
We have filled, we have filled the full-time position that Barry will be leaving and retiring from with an individual from within. He's been here a short period of time and Barry will continue on with training and he's involved with a lot of other things involved with the 911 upgrade.
He's a, he's one of those people that you never hear from, but is very, very important in county government. And he's a leader in that industry, well-respected throughout the state. And we will miss him.
Moving back into 3.0 then for personnel actions. In the Department of Public Safety Communications, Barry Hutchins is a part-time new position, not to exceed 1,000 hours annually, temporary GIS special projects. Pay grade 11, $35.37 an hour effective February 1st, 2021. In the Department of Public Safety Communications, Katie J. DeSanto, full-time replacement telecommunicator 1 without experience, pay grade 6, $16.76 hourly effective January 25th, 2021. In the Department of Public Safety Communications, Kristy M. Warner, full-time replacement telecommunicator 1 without experience, pay grade 6, $16.76 an hour effective February 1, 2021. In Information Services, Taylor C. Pearson, full-time replacement clerk 3 floater, pay grade 4, $14.09 an hour effective January 25th, 2021. In the courts at MDJ Whitman, Erica M. Groppick, full-time clerk 3. This is a lateral move, pay grade 4, $15.637089 an hour effective February 7th, 2021. In the courts, MDJ Frye. Lindsay S. Collins, full-time replacement clerk 3, pay grade 4, $14.09 an hour effective January 25th, 2021. In the prison, Coral R. Bloom, full-time replacement LPN, pay grade 6, $23 an hour effective February 1, 2021. In the Department of Public Safety Communications, Ashley Dietrich. It's a full-time replacement promotion. Now, this is a telecommunicator 2. Pay grade 8, $22.29 an hour effective January 24th, 2021.
Okay, so these are replacement positions with DPS and the courts and the prison.
So Roxanne, explain something to us. We're going to go to Christine Warner, who is hired as a telecommunicator. In our structure, our K scale, our structure. Someone who came in as a telecommunicator last year, for example, that had no experience. They came in at a rate, okay? And the following year, if you looked at that rate in our, in our scale, every year does that rate move up? In other words, a new person, she's making $16.76 an hour, but would she be at the same pay that the previous year's hire?
A telecommunicator who comes in without experience. I'm sure you're aware that they have to go through a rigorous training program.
Yes.
Number of hours. The last time I knew it was 800-plus hours of training. In order to be an experienced telecommunicator, they have to complete that training satisfactorily. And at that point, they would move up a pay grade. We have two different pay grades. One, not fully qualified, one, fully qualified. I think the rate that's established for the without experience is something that was established to attract somebody because it is a difficult job to get somebody who's in there that's interested and has the background for that particular type of position. Because not everybody is suited for that particular type of job.
So let me rephrase the question. So in 2020, a person comes in, and I don't care if they're a sheriff deputy or whether they work for the maintenance department. And they come in at their pay grade at $14 an hour. Let's just say everybody gets a 2.5% increase.
That person would get a 2.5% increase.
In 2021, a new person coming in.
Right.
So there's no separation between longevity of the first year and the second, correct?
If you're changing the starting rate.
Yeah, and you're saying we do change the starting rate every year.
Well, we did this year.
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion or questions? Carrie Nunn can have a motion, accept the personnel actions.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. So Carrie?
Commissioner McSar, I think there was a couple of years where we didn't put the increase on the starting rate.
Right.
Yes.
And you may recall, when Commissioner McCurnan was here, we.
Yes. And that was.
Yeah, that was one of two years.
And that was because it moved to like a position pay versus taking the base pay and moving it every year.
Right.
And that caused some issues as far as longevity and what our workforce thought about that.
I think commissioner, in past years, some of the increases were labeled as COLAs only. There were no merit increases, so there was not movement of the scale. So somebody who, if you changed the starting rate with a COLA, somebody who was here three years could be making the same as somebody coming in brand-new. And I think that's something that has happened in the past.
Yes. Okay, thanks.
We were, we were trying to save money also. Part of the problem with that is that the labor market in the community may change and then we find ourselves behind, as happened with the LPNs, as you recall several years ago, where we were far behind the market, so it's tough.
Okay, we will recess the commissioners' public meeting at this time. Convene the salary board.
Commissioners, we are asking you to approve the following as an update to the salary schedule. In the Department of Public Safety Communications, the creation of one part-time temporary GIS special projects position, pay grade 11.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
I'll second. Okay.
All in favor say aye.
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 Okay.
I think Commissioner Maravita's on a time delay.
Yeah. We have his phone on three-second time delay.
Oh, no.
At this time, we'll adjourn the salary board actions and reconvene to commissioners' public meeting.
Well, that takes us to 6.0. Maya Toon has the first five informational items. Maya?
Yep. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
The first item I have is to acknowledge the county is requesting sealed bids for flood mitigation, acquisition, and demolition projects. This is part of the 2018 flood mitigation assistance grant, which will fund these projects. There are six properties that are slated to be under this bid and two are located in Trout Run, one in Montoursville, one in Waynesport, and two in the Muntzey area.
Okay.
The next item I have is to acknowledge that we are going out RFP for copier equipment and full-service copier maintenance and repair. This is part of the discussion we had during the budget process.
And what will be the deadline? What's going to be the deadline for the RFPs?
RFPs for the sealed bids for cop, for flood mitigation. We're going to have to pull them up here. Flood mitigation is March something. We needed enough time because we need to do site visits to make sure that everyone has a full view of the specifics that's required for these properties. They have enough time to look at it and everyone has their, and that's due back on March 5th.
Okay.
And for the copier maintenance. Bear with me, I have to pull them up in my documents here. That is going to be February 19th.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh. The next two items kind of go hand in hand. They're all associated with the radio project that we're working with MCM on. The first one is to acknowledge the county is requesting proposals for five prefabricated shelters that's required for each shelter site, I mean tower site. And then the next one is to acknowledge the county is requesting proposals for two, 250-foot communication towers.
Okay.
Okay, and the last one I have, it's just the normal procedure around that we have for requesting bids for food products.
Okay, sounds good.
Maya, I have a question for you.
Sure.
When it comes to the towers.
Uh-huh.
And I understand what they're for, you know, for, you know, the first responders and whatnot, but in, in the request, could, could we find a way of, if the county's paying for the towers, can we find a way of being able to lease part of that tower for revenue? Or isn't that permissible?
I know they do that for other locations. We have multiple, I mean, Waynesport does it. School district, they, they lease off of it. And I know they do that for other agencies too. That's probably more of a question for Scott Conkell to see if these ones located where they're going to put these have that same opportunity. But I do know that they, they, you know, utilize revenue where they can.
Mr. Conkell, is there any tenants?
Yes, good morning, Maya.
Morning.
Yeah, so we've reached out to a few cell vendors to see if people would be interested in the future to do that. Something the county has not done in the past. However, you know, with private entities, we are reaching out to do that under the direction. I mean, Matt's been with us through this and so we are looking at, you know, getting some cell providers or vendors hopefully to go on, to go on our site. So that is, that is something we want to do, so.
Thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And I would, I want to make note that for this one, both RFPs are going to be due on March 5th.
Okay, thank you.
The last informational item is Director McDavid.
Commissioners, as an information item, just wanted to inform everyone that commissioners were appointed to, as commissioner representative and additional representative for the CEDOCOG-ordered directors. The commissioner representative will be Commissioner Metzger and the additional representative, i.e., alternate, will be Commissioner McSar.
Okay, thank you.
As, you know, this, this is kind of important. As we see consolidation taking place within county government, COGS are becoming more critical and more valuable to how we operate as a region. And CEDOCOG is our organization that we, I can't say we exclusively use, but I think we do. I know Keystone is another COG up there. But this is a fantastic partnership that we have. And they do so many things for the county. Administering the COVID relief was, was one of them. But they, they play a very vital role in how county government moves forward and how they're going to move forward in the future.
They're involved in the partnership with the four counties with broadband that we're exploring. And CEDOCOG's involved in that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So they do.
Do we need a motion to appoint them or no?
No, it's just informational item. Traditionally, the chair sits on the, as a representative for the county with CEDOCOG and they ask for an alternative in case the chair was not available.
So we should be very proud of the fact that the person who's been selected as the executive director for CEDOCOG is a former county employee, Kim Wheeling. Wheeler. And, you know, I think that says a lot about our county that, of course, Kim, in her own right, I mean, she worked for DCD, she worked for local government, state government, the public and the private sectors, and has a wealth of experience. But I think it does say a lot for our county that she was the deputy director of the planning department here and was selected by commissioners from 11 counties across the region. She also, people don't know this, but she has been selected for an executive program. She participated in an executive program where Davy Jane Gilmore, Steve Johnson, and some of the other folks from the larger employers mentor people on a one-on-one basis. And she has been selected by them and participated in that program, which was a real honor. For, and I, I think, I don't know if the program continues, but, so we should have some good things coming out of CEDOCOG as we have in the past under the leadership of the former executive director.
Good catch, Commissioner. She was well-deserving of the position.
Okay.
Ready?
Mm-hmm.
Move on to action items. 7.1, Maya Toon.
This item is to vote on a lease agreement with Gravy and Taylor. It's an amount of $1,000 a month or $12,000 annually. And the lease term is for one year, beginning on the first day of January 2021 and ending on December 31st, December 2021.
Got a motion to accept the lease agreement.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. So Carrie?
Thank you.
Thank you.
7.2, Scott Conkell, voting on agreement with Keystone Communications.
Morning, Scott.
Good morning, again, guys. This is a one-year agreement with Keystone to basically 24/7 coverage for preventive maintenance for our radio system.
Okay, that's the amount of?
$79,800.
Okay. Any questions, comments, or discussion?
Scott, this is part of the communication project or is this our typical contract with them?
This is our typical contract. What we did is, this will cover us for the one year till the new system is in place and then a lot of that stuff will be under warranty. So we'll have to revisit a maintenance program once we know where we're at at the end of this year and moving forward. So a lot of it will be covered under the warranty, at least for a year, and then move on from there, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Scott, I have a question. Armstrong Township's tower has been hit, how many times by lightning?
That thing over the years is probably, I would say, a dozen or so. We did, we did upgrade the grounding there last year. We found that the underground lightning rods were damaged for multiple hits, so we ended up replacing all three of the grounding rods. There's a grounding rod around the tower, the building, and then the actual compound itself. All three at some point had to be replaced. And I think we were at somewhere around $50,000 last year. Don't quote me on that, but that has been replaced and upgraded, so. And that needed to be done before we can do the tower upgrade on it because MoLOR is not going to agree to put anything in there till it's upgraded. So that had to be upgraded last summer and we did that.
Okay, good. So it's been addressed?
Yeah, that's been addressed, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Got a motion to accept the agreement with Keystone Communications?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie?
Jason York.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you all.
Has the next three. Jason, are you on the line?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Commissioners, good morning.
Morning.
First item is 7.3. This is a quote for Penn Power Group to redo our transmission on our truck 16 in the amount of $17,024.72. This is a 2009 truck we use daily at the transfer station to bring the trailers back and forth. We do have an agreement with Penn Power and this, they are the rates in the agreement.
Any questions or comments, discussion? Carrie Nunn can have a motion. So move.
I'll move to approve. Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie?
Thank you. Commissioner, 7.4 is an agreement with CH Reed Incorporated and that's preventive maintenance repair and emergency repairs for the gas dryer unit that we have up in, behind the Cogen building. The service that they perform is make sure that our dryer dries the methane gases before it's delivered to the boilers down at the recycling center. So typically methane gas is, it's very laden with water and moisture and you need to get it dried out before you can send it into the boilers. So CH is the, Reed is a company that we use to maintain that dryer every year.
Okay, any questions or comments? Carrie Nunn, can I have a motion to accept?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 So Carrie?
Thank you. Lastly, Commissioner, 7.5. This is amendment to the agreement with Mizor Earl. Mizor Earl is the geological firm that RMX has used for decades. They do any of the substructure in the, in the ground. If we need any kind of, how do I say? If we need any interpretations with readings that we have, like we're working in the legal battle with Leachate Tank, they do assist us with ground well monitoring. If we needed to do any additional wells, they would be the ones to help us find the structures in the earth and how we deal with it. They give us any support with geological, and as you can figure, we don't build a cell on a landfill without doing ground monitoring and understanding what kind of earth we're building a landfill on top of. So that's the services that Mizor Earl provides to RMX. And we typically work with Mizor Earl maybe once or twice a year. Right now, we are working with them with Leachate Tank.
Okay. And how long will this agreement be for, Jason?
That, I believe, is a five-year. I don't want to get them mixed up.
The original was five years.
Yeah, I believe this is an extension. Let me make sure I have my right notes. This is, the original was a 10-year.
Oh, it was?
The original, yeah, it's from 2015 to '25, but this is.
Oh, okay.
This is the 2021 service rate. So the rates did increase, like your chief hydrologist went from 148 to 150. So it looks like everything got about a $2 bump.
Okay, so it's.
Something got a $1 bump.
The original.
That's why I'm going to make sure before I quote you. It was a, it's simply, this is a 2021 labor rate change to the contract.
Okay, because I'm looking at, it talks about the agreement dated January 15th, or January 22nd, '15. You're saying that was an original 10-year contract?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and this is an upgrade?
Yep, just a change in the labor rate.
Jason, could you explain on the Exhibit A, under related expansion? Jason, could you explain on the Exhibit A, under related expenses, where you see your vehicle rental at $50 per day plus mileage, and mileage will be billed at a current IRS rate? And underneath that, a subcontractor's cost will include a 10% surcharge. Please explain that to us.
Commissioners, if Mizor &amp; Earl would need to bring in a subcontractor, so typically Mizor &amp; Earl would probably bring in a drilling company to assist us if we need to drill wells, which we typically don't need wells drilled, and we haven't for some time. But if we were to drill wells, that would be where Mizor &amp; Earl would come in. They would, they have drillers and other companies on their vendor list that they use to assist them for us. The surcharge would be the cost that Mizor &amp; Earl will charge us to handle the administrative side of using a subcontractor. We, again, Commissioners, I would say we haven't used this function in some time, but we do have it in there just in case.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? And a motion to accept?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So carry.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Mark Egley has 7.6 through 7.9.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am here requesting your consideration of a number of contracts, the first being with Adelphi Village for foster care and residential services. Their rates range from $78.79 a day up to $315.21 a day, depending on the level and type of care provided.
Okay, is there an increase from last year?
There is an increase, it's about a 2% increase in the overall. Currently, we have no children in that facility, in those facilities at this point, so.
Thank you.
Did you want me to do all of them, or?
We'll do motion on each one.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? And a motion?
I'll move to approve the Adelphi Village contract.
I'll second.
All fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carry. Okay, thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Next, I have an agreement with Justice Works Youth Care. They provide a variety of community-based in-home services, and their rates range from $62 an hour to $82 an hour, depending on the service selected. And we do have a handful of kids or families that are receiving that service currently.
Okay.
Mark, they're very familiar with Justice Works and what they do. But how did they cope and what adjustments did they make over 2020 as far as COVID-related services?
Well, obviously, a lot of their contacts were done with FaceTime and remote contacts, porch visits and those types of things, so there was certainly less, you know, in-person contacts. I think that has changed, and they are moving, slowly moving to be more one-on-one with their clients. But it's, you know, it's been a struggle like everything else.
Yes, yes.
So I, you know, I would say that most of our services have been somewhat compromised because of the conditions that we've had to work under over the last, you know, 10, 11 months.
And we realize how important it is for those students to have that direct contact with that agency. And that was one of the questions that I'd have, because they didn't have that direct contact-
Correct.
Other than two children. So, you know, when, when there will be a meeting coming up regarding the allocation of vaccines, and I think it's so, so very critical that we get our educators and anyone who is in contact with students, get them vaccinated as soon. They should move up to the, one of the top priorities so that we can get our children steadily in school.
We have started to get our, some of our staff scheduled for vaccinations. So we have, like our crisis and folks have started to get vaccinations. Some are scheduled this week, actually, through with Guy Singer.
Okay, very good.
So we've started to get some, some folks, the ball is finally rolling a little bit here.
Mark, this Commissioner Maravito, can you give the public an example of how Justice Works would interact with a family?
Oh, sure. Well, they would work both with the youth. Maybe there's some parent-child conflicts or having trouble with regular attendance in school or those types of things. So, so the folk, the person from Justice Works would engage the youth and the parents both in working with them to, you know, to encourage more pro-social behaviors, to give parents some techniques to help, you know, engage their youth, to, you know, keep them on track with their homework and compliance with their expectations of school and/or probation or whatever the involvement they might have with outside the community agencies or organizations. So, so that's the type of contact that they work with, or the types of things that they do with the youth.
Now, these kids, would they have already been involved with the juvenile system or is this a preventative program to try to keep them from getting involved, or both?
Both. Juvenile probation uses Justice Works a lot more heavily than we do. Ours are mainly used for kids who are, that were trying to, obviously, in this environment, schools, our kids are having trouble, you know, logging on and remaining engaged with their education remotely. And so we're getting referrals from the schools with regards to truancy referrals. But obviously, from our perspective, we don't necessarily consider them truant. It's the fact that they're not logging on or following through with some of their homework. So we're trying to get, get the families and the youth engaged to be more consistent with their education, and so they don't fall further behind.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, I have a motion to accept the agreement with Justice Works.
I'll move.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Next, we have a contract with Dwell. Dwell is a, kind of a new nonprofit in the, in the area, and they have been doing a lot to support and help foster care and adoptive parents in our community. And this is a contract for them to provide some trauma training for our families, our foster care families that we have. We have about 50-some families in our, in our agency, and then also work with our staff as well, and to support families in our community that are caring for our kids. I will point out that these funds are completely federal, all 100% federal dollars. This is some grant funding that we received through the Family First Prevention Services Act, and this is part of our process to help enhance the skills and capabilities of our foster families to be able to take youth that have more challenging behaviors, who otherwise might end up in more congregate care settings and residential treatment facilities. We really want to keep our youth local and put services in the home and in the community and keep our kids here and get the treatment locally. And so this is an initiative to really strengthen our local foster families and enhance some of their skills and provide more support to them so that they're more inclined to be able to work with some of our more challenging youth and kids in care.
And it's great this agency is located in Lycan County.
Correct.
Yeah, I had the opportunity to meet the folks from this agency at the picnic that you, that we, you put on, the youth picnic, children youth picnic, I think, last year, before COVID, it must have been 2019. But I think it's great that you got this grant and you took the initiative to apply. Did you apply for it or did they apply for it?
No, 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 we, this was something that was made available. All counties receive some allocation of this funding to use to try to transition to the, you know, under the new federal legislation. So this is just how we're using a small piece of that funds. We actually received $150,000 to use over the next three years to help with this transition, because we're going to be losing federal dollars for, that support part of the cost of kids that are in congregate care. So, fact of October 1st of this year, you will only be able to receive federal reimbursement for the cost of care after, for the first 14 days that a kid's, that a youth is in a residential facility. After those 14 days, the cost of care just becomes split between the state and the county, unless that location is considered a specialized setting, which means that they have to meet a lot of extra criteria and be approved by the state. And in that case, then you can still claim federal monies for those kids in those settings. But it's quite a complicated and complex movement that's occurring here in the state, and obviously, we're a little bit behind in terms of where the state's at in implementing all of this. And so the federal government approves some additional funds to help ease the transition for states, and so the state has allocated those resources to the, to the counties, and our portion was $150,000 to help with that transition over the next three years.
So, so this will empower these local foster care families and teach them and to be able to work with kids who are in very difficult situations when you read something in the paper and there's some kids involved, whether it's a drug incident or something else. It's either these kids go to a foster care family or they go to a, an institution essentially, right? And what this grant does is it helps beef up those families so they feel they can do it-
Correct.
Or give them the thrill.
Correct. We don't, we don't want our children in institutional care. They're removed from the community, they lose their connections with their family and their, and their, and their home, school, and community, and their treatment outcomes are not always the best. So it's, research has shown that you get better outcomes if you can keep children safe in their own homes and put services in the, in the home and in the community for those youth. And that's what our initiative is really focused at doing. Currently, we have no children in children and youth. We have no children currently in a, in a group setting. All of our kids in care are in foster families right now. And that's been the case, I think, like, since about last, maybe November, October. November is the la, we had, got our last child out of a residential facility. So we've gone a couple of months now without having any kids in a, in a congregate care residential facility. And I think we have about 48 kids in care right now. So that's pretty good.
Thank you. Yeah, that's very good, thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept the agreement with Dwell orphan care?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second that.
All fair say aye?
Aye.
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 Mark, before you leave, the kids that are in some of the group homes or care, and I'm thinking of one in particular, that was, had some serious issues. He's no lo, well, they're no longer there. Did they age out? How are they?
It depends. I mean, I don't know who exactly you're speaking to, but, but I, but we do have kids that do age out of care. There are, if a youth meets certain requirements, they can remain in care after 18, up until the age of 21 and now along to even to 24. There's some new regulations going into effect. But the youth have to meet certain requirements to remain in care, either being involved in some type of a treatment program, either working like 80 hours on average a month, those types of things, furthering their education, those types of things. And some of our youth, we do have a couple of youth that are remaining in care, working and doing quite well. But then we have other youth that, that really would prefer to, you know, give it a go on their own. And they do have re-entry rates as well. So we've had kids that have left care, but then figured, you know, it's not working out so well, and have come back into care. So there are those options for youth. We certainly, and they also get services through our independent living program. So youth can receive services up to the age of 24 in IL after they've left, left care. So we serve quite a few kids in our independent living program as well. But youth, youth struggle who are in, who have spent a lot of time in a, in a group home or a residential setting. It's a tough transition for them to be successful outside of that kind of environment. That's why we try to keep, minimize the amount of time that youth spend in any of those settings.
Thanks, Mark.
Have one more item, and that's an agreement with Grevee &amp; Taylor to serve as our substitute solicitor on an as-needed basis for representation before the dependency court at the rate of $120 an hour. And that's no change in rate.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept this agreement with Grevee &amp; Taylor Law Office?
I'll move to approve.
I'll, I'll second that.
All fair say aye?
Aye.
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 And how long has Mr. Grevee been serving the county in that capacity?
Oh, about 45, seven years, something like that.
Forty-some years.
Yeah. Yep. Yep, he's, he's an institution. We are thankful to have him.
We appreciate it.
I'll remind him of that. When he gets out of his car parked in front of me, I'll say, "An institution's parked in front of me."
That's right.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
7.10, Krista McLaughlin, she's on the line, Krista?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Krista.
This is a big budget revision process that spans four different years. And it all centers around the Franklin Township Sanitary Sewer Project in Larisville. They have had, just as background information, they were funded in 2017. They also have competitive CDBG funds, which is not part of this budget change. And at the time that that was funded, we thought, and were quite certain, not only myself, the county, the Lycan County Water and Sewer Authority, the township, and the engineer that they've been working with, NDA Engineering, were working very heavily with USDA to receive the additional funding that was necessary to get this sanitary sewer system that is necessary installed in Larisville and keep the monthly user rate to a reasonable rate for the residents of that town, of that particular village. Unfortunately, the USDA funds have completely fallen through, and they have shifted Franklin Township and, in consultation with Lycan County Water and Sewer Authority, have shifted their focus on trying to get the funds from USDA to PENVAST, which is kind of a rival funding source for these types of projects. The meeting for PENVAST award, I believe, is later this week. So hopefully by the end of this week, we will know whether they will have that funding source. However, because of the, these funds were initially allocated in 2017, and, you know, the CDBG funds have a time clock on them, we need to do some budget changes in order to make sure that funds are timely, extended in a timely fashion, and that, and none of the county's funds need to go back to the Commonwealth. And so what, in consultation with the planning department, I have put together is a four-year budget revision process of simply moving around projects that have already been funded in relatively the same amount of money, so that we can move forward with those projects. The projects that are closer to being ready to go, we can move forward with them faster and extend older funds quicker than leaving things where they are. So in order to be brief on and not go through all of the funding amounts and the budget changes and things like that. In 2017, we would be moving the Franklin Township, the sanitary sewer, the actual construction of the sewer, this project. From that project to the monthly library removal of architectural barriers, which is all, all of the background work has been completed on that, and they would be ready to go. So we would be moving, switching those funds, and then the year that the monthly library removal of architectural barriers project was funded, which was 2019, we would be adding the Franklin Township project. So we would essentially be switching one for the other in different federal fiscal years. Doing the same thing between 2019, I'm sorry, 2018 and 2020, we would be switching the Center for Independent Living Rooftop Air Conditioning Unit from 2020 to 2018, and the Larisville Lateral Installation Project from 2018 to 2020. Ultimately, this results in essentially a wash for the funding amount between those four projects. I did an analysis, and the difference between switching the monthly library project with the sanitary sewer construction is a difference of $590. And the lateral installation and the rooftop air conditioning unit is a difference of $811. So all less than $1,000 in difference. And so I think that this is the best way to move forward to make sure that funds aren't needed to be repaid just because they simply weren't spent due to unforeseen circumstances in funding the Larisville Sanitary Sewer System. So I can go through the numbers if you want me to, but that tends to get a little bit complicated and confusing. But please let me know if you need any further information on this. on this.
Okay, thank you, Kristin. Is there any questions or comments?
Oh, yeah.
Well, thank, thank you, Kristin. This is why we hired CDAC to, to do this, to span multiple budget years. And the memo you prepared for Ms. Ebner's signature is very helpful.
Okay, good, yeah.
Yeah, we miss seeing you up here.
I know. I know. I feel like it's been forever. I want to wish you all also a Happy New Year and hopefully 2021 ends up being a whole lot better than 2020.
I think it will. The question that I have for you is, how is DEP reacting to the delay?
Um, I have not heard anything. I've been in communication with both John Bickhart and Christine Weigle at the Lake Hurley County Water and Sewer Authority, and I have not heard any issue with DEP. I, I, I know that this is, I, I'm not even aware, I don't know that they were under a consent order or anything like that. I know that they submitted the Act 537 plan a number of years ago. I'll be honest, I've been working at CDAC for eight years, going on nine, and this was a project that was on the, not even on the radar, but funded when I was hired. So it has been going on for probably close to fifteen years, from when it was first identified that this was a necessary project due to just the, the nature of how things are up in, in Lairdsville with on-lot sewer systems on, on very, very small properties, less than, I believe, some of them are, most of them are less than a quarter of an acre, definitely less than half an acre, and would never be allowed to have on-lot sewer systems. Most of them have, are very old and are completely failing, and that is causing a huge issue. And there was a study as part of that Act 537 plan of some of the bad things that come out of sewers, leaching into the soil and potentially into contaminating wells. So, this needs to, this is something that frankly has been championed by the Lake Hurley County Water and Sewer Authority for over a decade. Like I said, I have not heard anything in terms of pressure from DEP. We are very hopeful about the Penn Vest funding, which we should know an outcome of by the end of this week.
And...
And I think, as far as, as far as the design of the process, as far as the design of the project, I, my understanding is like, they're ready to go, they're just waiting for funding.
Kristin, I think it's really, the fact that you said it's been ten years is a real testament of the need for part federal funding for infrastructure in rural communities across this country because the bigger rural communities have been able to meander through various programs, whether it's what happened in the last decade with the various lateral systems and the building of tanks and so forth. But these really small rural communities all across America, you know, need this infrastructure. So hopefully, in the next four years, we'll get an infrastructure bill, a bipartisan bill that we can help entities like this.
Yeah, there's, there's such a...
I was going to say...
We've seen it, we've seen it throughout Lake Hurley County over a number of years, yeah.
I was going to say that when you take a look at how Lake Hurley County Water and Sewer runs their, their business, they try to make sure that each, because they, they cover a number of communities, they try to make sure that each individual entity is supporting itself. And that's very difficult at times, especially when you see rates at one hundred and thirty-five to a hundred and fifty dollars a month. And getting back to Commissioner Marabito's point, the regulations are even going to get more stringent as time goes on, and I don't know how people can afford those rates. So, the federal government has to look at this as infrastructure, and trust me, the rural communities in which we live in cannot afford those types of rates. So, I'm glad you're, you're helping them out by moving the, the process down the road, but it's something that you have to do every once in a while.
This is, this is certainly a, a topic I could go on about. When I was first hired, I knew nothing about sewer systems, but now I am quite educated, partially thanks in ter, in terms of the, the Lake Hurley County Water and Sewer Authority and the other municipal authorities throughout the, the county that I've worked with over the years. It is a grave concern that there are these aging infrastructures that, I mean, from, they have been underfunded, or in the case of Lairdsville, there hasn't been a system for a number of years, and then all of a sudden, they find themselves within multimillion-dollar, a mandated multimillion-dollar project. And how that gets funded and how that gets passed down to the local residents, and the way in which that can be funded so that that multimillion-dollar debt, you know, sudden mandate doesn't occur again, so that there is capital reserve to deal with these problems and deferred maintenance is not an issue, but at the same time, ensuring that the historic villages in these rural communities are able to keep their residents, who are often lower income, often elderly, and, and just in a difficult situation to, to face that payment. And the more funding sources that we can find to lower that rate long-term but not compromise the future operations of that system are, it's, it's a delicate, delicate balance.
And what a novel idea to have a bipartisan bill to help our infrastructure instead of shipping money overseas to help other governments build their infrastructures. Wouldn't that be a novel idea, that the feds could start to actually help our own people?
It's, I, I've seen it in, in municipality after municipality, village after village across the county, just Lake Hurley County alone. And certainly, you're not the only rural county that faces this problem.
Okay. I have a motion to accept the CDBG budget revision?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carry. Thank you, Kristin.
Thank you very much.
Happy New Year, stay well.
You too.
Thanks. Uh, we were on a conference call last week with Pima and Dr. Levine about the vaccine Really didn't get anywhere or new information on what's going on with the exception that they get an allocation, which is unknown, from the feds every Friday, they're told, and it was released on Monday, to the different counties. So, the Lake Hurley County Commissioners feel that we'd like to put together a task force moving forward to invite the players to the table in Lake Hurley County to develop a vaccine plan so that we can get the vaccines out to those who choose to have it. For instance, we have a UPMC that has a large note, a large amount of vaccines ready to go. However, they feel they're being micromanaged by the state. The state says they're being micromanaged by the feds, and we continue to hear the same rhetoric. So what we need to do is develop a plan so that the people in this county know where to go. So if you're a senior, it's kind of like walking onto a campus as a student, a large campus, and you're told, "These are your classes, now go find them without a map." And it's very similar to that. So we have, we have teachers that need vaccine, vaccinations, they need to be able to teach. School nurses could be giving them vaccines right in the schools. We have pharmacies that can do this. We have senior centers, we have five senior centers that could be locations where the seniors could go to get their vaccines. We have two hospitals, we have fire halls that could be locations to get the vaccines. So later this week, we'll be inviting all these players, EMS, DPS, the hospital's staff, we'll be inviting them all together to develop a plan moving forward. We'll release that to the public, where you can go and get vaccine, get a vaccine, and that way you can make a choice where you can go. Obviously, we're going to ask people to make appointments so there aren't long lines, but we feel that we have to have something in place countywide moving forward so we can assist the public for those who choose to get the vaccines and get on with life. If we can just get our teachers vaccinated, like Commissioner Massar said, we won't have to shut down schools. The teachers are going to be in the schools, they're going to be able to teach. Our frontline workers, our, our hospitals are giving them. What was mind-blowing is the vaccines, there's been two that have been released in December, and we get an email on January ninth with the, the structure of how they're going to give these vaccines, what category you fall into, without any game plan moving forward. And Dr. Levine says that the feds are constantly changing their minds when we see the state constantly changing their minds too. So, the blame game has to stop. We have to get a plan and move forward to get the vaccines out to the general public. We feel that if we can get that plan in place in Lake Hurley County, we can move forward. We don't need the, we just need the vaccines and we can move forward.
You know, Commissioners, last night I got a call from a doctor who volunteered to give the vaccine, and he would bring a nurse with him, you know, at no cost, but he would, he would do that. He said, he said, "Rick, when we did the vaccines for the flu, we were able to get two hundred a done a day." So in a week, just he and his nurse were able to get about a thousand done. So we may find other doctors who are willing in their spare time or nurses to volunteer when we get this up and running. So I was very encouraged by that. He was very enthusiastic. He said, "I don't want the payment, I don't want anything, I just want to be able to contribute to do something."
That's great to hear. He could do it at school, he could do it at fire halls, and that's great to hear.
That's what he said.
Yeah.
He said, you know, "Get, get it set up in the Lake Hurley mall." He said, "There's a lot of parking there."
Yep.
And I'll go down there. He's a doctor in monthly. He said, "I'll go over there with my nurse." So, so this may be able to get some real traction to it.
Yep, absolutely. We got a fairground, we got a mall, we have plenty of locations. We just need to put together the game plan so people know where to go and that they have a choice of, okay, if I can't go here, I can go there, and they call it and make an appointment and get it done. Any other Commissioners' comment? So that'll, that'll be taking, taking place, that, that meeting will be taking place on either Thursday or Friday this week, so we'll be giving an update on our next Commissioners' meeting moving forward. Public comment this time?
There's two on YouTube. M.C. Green, any news on the relocation of the podium where I stuck a camera? And the second one is pertaining, I think, to the same thing. Jody Bayney, she would like to see the faces of who are speaking. And Commissioner Director McDermott is going to...
We're still identifying options. Obviously, moving the podium up front works well or could work well with employees, but then members of the public and then security aspects, we're taking a look at.
Okay.
Do they have cameras that can rotate?
We're looking into that.
Okay, any other comments?
None.
Okay. Here are no more. Meeting will be adjourned, our next Commissioners' meeting, we've completed the agenda, will be Tuesday, January the twenty-sixth, right here in this room at 10:00 AM. Thank you and have a good day.